Testing.
We can hear you, John. Good evening.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Alderman Budmats.
You're good.
Give it a couple of minutes here to let everybody jump on.
Oh, I had him jerking, got a blonde hair all of a sudden.
Kevin, you doing okay?
Doing well, thanks.
Yeah.
We're gonna give it about another thirty seconds here, just to make sure everyone's jumped on from the waiting room. Alright, it looks like everybody is now out of the waiting room and join the meeting. I'll go ahead, since we have seven thirty-one, I'll call this November tenth City Council meeting to order at this time. And so with that, if you would remain muted, but join me in the pledge of allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Then with that, if every council member could please unmute while the clerk calls roll.
Cannon. Is he here?
For the participants.
I didn't see him.
I don't see him on the list. Do we know if he's gonna be absent this evening? He's normally one of the first to join the calls.
Right. I didn't hear anything.
Wonder if he's got power. Cause I know there's been outages.
Yeah.
I'll continue and come back with him one more time. Budmats?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Veneziano?
Here.
Bessassi?
Here.
Diastis?
Present.
Sanica?
Here.
And Cannon, did you make it on?
He has not made it on and he's not in the waiting room. So, this time, we've got six present and one absent. We still have a quorum this evening. And with that, members of the audience will be reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for the current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel, as well as their other media outlets. Does look like the storms, or at least the worst of them are over now, but if we do lose connectivity, my plan B will be to have everybody dial back in if you have power, and I'll reopen the conference bridge on my cellphone, just so we can get through this meeting. But I don't think I should have any issues, and I hope nobody else does as well. Couple of ground rules, as we go through always during these meetings. The members of the public and public comment will be afforded to those who are joining on this evening's conference line, so long as you provided the contact credentials, along with the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline, which is noted on the top of this evening's agenda. Members of the public who are present at city council chambers listening to this meeting, you'll also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures applicable to the public comment, which is that you've signed in prior to the start of this meeting, which is typically seven thirty. Any written comments that we receive will of course be read aloud. And with that, we can move on to the first order of business, which is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. And we have minutes from October twenty-seventh City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Sanica, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Excuse me, I just have to let some other attendees in, which were not Alderman Cannon, but I want to scroll down on the agenda as well, to bring us to the next point, which is mayor's report, and I only have a couple items, two of which were more lighthearted, like the first one about Halloween, I hope everybody had a good time if you participated in the trick-or-treating and events that were scattered throughout the community, mainly trick-or-treating. The weather was at least on our side, unlike last year when we had snow on October thirty-first. And then I wanted to give a special thanks to police chief and the police department. Last week's elections went ahead without any disruption or disobedience, and I do appreciate the police department deploying additional services, security and watch, just to make sure that nothing happened. And so I do appreciate the vigilance across the city. And then finally, as everybody knows, COVID nineteen numbers, meaning the infections and spread, have significantly increased across the state, and that's no different actually for Rolling Meadows. Our numbers are increasing as well. And I've been receiving phone calls from business owners as a result of the governor's mitigation measures. And I do know it's a challenge to obey those mitigation measures. For some, it's the difference between economic survival and closing the doors for good. I do want our city and our businesses to be complicit so much as you can be. I do wanna see our residents continue to wearing face masks when out in public. And I am participating in regular calls that the governor is having with mayors and other city leaders to try and determine what the best options are, because I am not really in favor of closing everything down without being able to provide some sort of solution sets for those businesses that will be put in jeopardy as a result. And so for me, it's a challenge to try and obey the orders of shutting down or keeping businesses closed if we don't have alternatives to make sure that there's any viability with them. So I'll keep everyone posted on that as things change basically week by week as these increasing COVID nineteen infections occur. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, two items. The first one is I had several residents reach out to me over the holiday or Halloween weekend that they really, really liked the sign idea that the city had put out. So they requested that city, you know, move that forward next year to, you know, put it in the water bill, and we use that moving forward. It was great for the kids to be able to tally and families to know what houses were participating. And then secondly, I can get more information out, but because of the COVID numbers, the hospital, Northwest Community Hospital, is again looking for donations, you know, for PPE. You know, as everyone knows, the numbers are going up and PPE is in demand again. So, and you can always look at Northwest Community Hospital's website for that information. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Quick note, Alderman Cannon has arrived into the call. Welcome. Good evening, Alderman Cannon. Alderman Sanica, ward report.
Mayor, many residents continue to work from home instead of commuting to offices, especially with the resurgence in COVID nineteen cases, as we've mentioned. And so as more individuals are working from home, I received some concerns from residents in Ward Seven regarding excessive noise from lawn mowers, leaf blowers, and landscaping equipment. With some work occurring on Oaksbury Lane in excess of two hours this afternoon. So I informed the resident that if they have a noise complaint, that they should contact the city as excessive noise is prohibited pursuant to our code. But given the specific example of more than two hours, I would like to discuss this matter further for matters not on the agenda later tonight. This concludes my ward report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Look forward to talking about that in depth on matters not on the agenda. Are there any other ward reports this evening? If not, we will continue on with this evening's agenda, and this would be the time that we open the floor to the public for twenty minutes. There are two signatures on the list. The first is attorney Laura Luisi, and she's here for item E. She doesn't necessarily wanna speak, but she wanted me to inform the council that she is available if there are any questions related to that item E on our agenda. The next individual would like to speak, and this is Shiraz Reina. Shiraz, if you're on the call, if you're on through the computer, you can unmute now.
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm good, fine. I'm just here to listen like what, because my thing was on agenda, so I'm just here to listen and the participation, like what would happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to the next set of agenda items. These are the pending ordinances in for second reading. We'll begin with the first one, letter A, ordinance number two zero dash four six, ordinance to approve confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Sanica, and thank you for the second, Alderman Bessassi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number two zero dash four seven. amend chapter one twenty-two of the city of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to adopt and approve a zoning ordinance and a zoning map. Is there a motion to approve this, to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you for the second, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to line item C, ordinance number two zero dash four eight. That's to approve the tax levy for the city of Rolling Meadows in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Lot of latecomers to the meeting this evening. Welcome. Moving on to line item D, ordinance number two zero dash four nine, approve a tax levy. Wait a minute. These both for the city of, this for the library, excuse me. Ordinance number two zero dash four nine, approve a tax levy for the Rolling Meadows Library. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Bessassi, for the second. Is there any discussion on this one? Alderman, okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to the last ordinance, line item E, ordinance number two zero dash five zero, authorize a text amendment to section one twenty-two dash twenty-eight I two to increase the number of adult-use cannabis business establishments from one to two, and to approve the following related to thirty-six fifty Birdnik Street. A, to dissolve all previous planned sub-development approvals. B, preliminary plat of survey approval for the final plat of subdivision, thirty-six fifty Birdnik Street subdivision. C, a special use for an adult-use cannabis craft grower processing infusing establishment. And D, preliminary and final planned development approval. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you for the second, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received several calls from residents this week about this particular item, encouraging me to vote against it as they, as one person said that it stands against what they tried to teach their kids not to do growing up in Rolling Meadows for many years. And so, out of respect for the residents who reached out to me, I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had probably some of my peers, Mr. Budmats, just noted too that actually received two inquiries, two of which were not residents of Rolling Meadows. I valued their feedback. And I know, I wanted to ask my peers also, or maybe I know Ms. Luisi's on with us as well. The consensus, I shouldn't say the consensus, what I was able to glean from the two phone calls I received, actually one was an email, one was a phone call, was regarding potential pollution. I know it's obviously in the industrial area, some of the research that I was able to do on my own, I did not see any negative effects to that based on the two calls I did. So I didn't know if it would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Ms. Luisi, because based on the research I could do on my own, it was along the lines of, obviously, there's state guidelines, there's EPA guidelines, it's in the industrial parks, things like that. So I am still comfortable for my vote the first time moving forward with this. It was just a question that came from two people, not residents, that reached out to me, so I just wanted to bring it up to the council.
At this point, if we wanna do that, we're gonna have to have a motion to open the floor for public comment. You'll have to have a second, and then we'll take a vote on it. If there's no discussion on that, are you interested in doing that, going that route?
Yes, sir. If there was support for it, so we could have one of the experts speak to that, please.
Okay, so is there, can you make the motion to open the floor for me, so I can get a second?
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor for discussion on item E.
Is there a second for that? I saw Alderman Bessassi's hand up, but he went down, so I'll take Alderman Diastis as the second. And then with this, I'll ask if there's any discussion on the request to open the floor. Raise your hand if you have discussion about opening the floor. And if not, then what I'll do is ask the clerk to call roll.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon? Did we lose him?
I don't see him on the list of participants, and he's not in the waiting room. So we may have, he is having technical issues. He's, no, he's here. His name's on here. It's at the bottom.
Mike, are you there?
I'm here. I'm sorry.
Yes?
Yeah, I voted yes. I'm sorry. I didn't lie my microphone off. Sorry.
Okay, Budmats?
Yes.
Alright, that makes seven in favor to open up the floor. Then I will ask at this time, attorney Luisi, if you are available on the call and you're in the computer, then you can press unmute and address Alderman O'Brien's questions about pollution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to Alderman O'Brien for your questions, a valid question. And certainly, we do understand that concern. There will not be an environmental impact. There isn't any sort of pollution that's gonna be emitted from the facility. You know, our overall goal is to eventually become entirely, well, as close to organic as possible, meaning not using any pesticides at all. But in the meantime, while we do have to use certain pesticides for plant growth, which are quite common, you know, the waste disposal of that is pretty simple, and there isn't excess waste. And we do have plans in place in order to care for that. So there should not be any environmental impact or any sort of pollution, and that goes for, that goes for smell pollution as well. There shouldn't be any smell emitted from the facility. We've designed appropriate HVAC systems to ensure that, you know, nobody would really know from the outside of the facility what was happening on the inside.
Alderman O'Brien?
Great. No, thanks, attorney Luisi. I appreciate that. That confirms, obviously, you're the expertise of the individual research I could do, so I appreciate you taking the time for the question and confirming that for myself and my peers. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. While the floor is open and attorney Luisi is on the floor, are there any other questions from any other member of the council? By show of hand. It doesn't look like there's any other questions for you, attorney Luisi. Thank you for being available for that. I appreciate you. Welcome. And now, if I could have a motion to close the floor? One of the council members here. Quick show of hand, motion to close the floor. Alright, I got, thanks, Alderman O'Brien, and the second, Alderman Diastis. Any discussion on closing the floor? I don't think so. But will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
That's seven in favor to close the floor. It's now closed, and we're back on the original discussion items. Are there further comments and questions to address at this time on the original ordinance? Alderman Bessassi, you had your hand up before. The request to open the floor, do you still have any questions remaining, or have they been answered?
The attorney answered my question I was gonna ask about mitigation of any odors or smells or anything that would be noticeable by neighbors. And she sufficiently answered that question, so thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions while we're having discussion? If not, then the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes. No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Uh, sorry.
At least it sounded like a yep. That's six in favor and one opposed. This ordinance is adopted. This moves us on to the next item, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of two items, and they are items letters F and G. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman Cannon?
Uh, I wanna, geez.
Okay, then I'm just, you know, because there's two, I will just take them each individually. Alright, this time, because it doesn't make any sense to not do that. So, the first ordinance number two zero dash zero zero is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the state of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Bessassi. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, this ordinance will move on to second reading. The next one, line item G, ordinance number two zero dash zero zero at this time, is to amend the liquor, alcohol liquor code to approve a class G A liquor license for video gaming for If Management Incorporated doing business as Vicente Bar and Grill at thirty-nine eighty-nine Algonquin Road. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve this ordinance for second reading? Thank you, Alderman Bessassi. Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there any discussion? Alderman Cannon, you can have the first up to bat here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just like to hear a statement from our community development department. You know, I know in the past, this particular property, we've had some issues with building permit issues and not paying the permit fees. I'm wondering if, first, if they're up to date, and second, if we find them at all lately for non-compliance with any issue.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there staff that can answer the two questions if they're up to date on permits? And are there any compliance issues?
Mayor, I, I can't answer the question quite honestly. I don't know where they're at right now. Maybe Joel and Charlton knows, but I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you, Director Horn. Assistant Director Charlton, do you have any information to weigh in with?
I do not have any information on whether or not they're not in compliance or we're currently working with them on any issues of non-compliance. I do know that they have submitted plans for the required improvements to the interior of the space, and those plans are currently under review. And those improvements will need to be constructed as a condition of the approval of a license. And so that's about all I can report at this point. I could find out more for you for second reading if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Cannon. How does that feedback sit with you?
Well, I'd like to hear more information, so I guess I can wait to the second reading. You know, I've been told in the past that there was build-out going on there with no plans in place. I'm just concerned about non-compliance and not payment of past taxes at times. So I'm really concerned about giving someone the privilege of having a video gaming parlor and not being up to date and everything on a regular basis. We shouldn't have to come looking for the money all the time, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I can hold off to the second reading. But I would appreciate if staff could kind of inform everybody what's going on there.
We will. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Give me a quick moment to let in another individual, and then I see Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Give me a quick moment to let in another individual, and then I see Alderman O'Brien. Your hand is up. Floor is yours for discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And this might be for Assistant Director Charlton. Also, I did notice on the grid that was provided, which was very much appreciated. There's a note that says that as long as they stay underneath five machines and do not increase to six, I'm guessing that's how we would treat the other currently gaming accessories, that I know it's the checklist of the thirteen of the twelve items, but I wasn't aware unless I might have missed something in all the discussion we had on this that if there are six machines allowed the maximum by the state, that would fall into a gaming cafe criteria? Is that my understanding right on how it's highlighted on the table we were provided? I just want clarification around that.
Fair, Alderman O'Brien. That's a great, great question. It's one of the twelve criteria. They have six. And I think when I originally put that, that criteria list together, we had four of the five criteria being met, so I just didn't, I wanted to kind of gauge it a little bit. Letting you know that if any of the other conditions were met, that it could potentially put them at a cafe level. We did, however, decide to remove the criteria that they be open for a year as a restaurant. This particular owner did need to close for a period of time, but it was related to COVID, and we didn't think that was the intent of that criteria. So instead of four of the five criteria, they have three. So any of the other twelve criterias that are remaining, if they achieve two more, then that would kick that in.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Would not do it, in other words.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Director Charlton, for the clarification.
Thanks, Alderman O'Brien. Any other discussion on this item from the council? Well, seeing no other discussion, then the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sainika?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
That's seven in favor and none opposed. The ordinance does move forward for second reading. That brings us on to new business, which is a motion to approve payment bills on warrants for November tenth, twenty twenty. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sainika. Is there a second? Show of hand for a second. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion on the payment of bills on warrants? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sainika?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Now, it looks like we do not have any consent resolutions this evening, so that'll bring us on to other business and reports. I do not have any appointments this evening, nor do I have a proclamation. Does the city clerk have something to report this evening?
I do. I wanted to present to you and the city council the twenty-twenty-one dates, meeting dates, and and I also wanted to remind everybody that December's meetings will be the first, second, and third Tuesday of the month because of the holiday.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then that brings us on to the city staff reports. And first up for the city staff reports are community items of interest. For that, I'll defer to Manager Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We do want to mention that City Hall and Public Works offices will be closed on Wednesday, November eleventh in recognition of Veterans Day. Please remember and thank a veteran. And we do want to mention that refuse routes are staying regular. That means that there are no delays in service for this holiday. We do want to mention that the Rolling Meadows Police Department and Willow Creek Church will be conducting a mobile food pantry event this Friday, November thirteenth, from four P M. to five P M. At the gazebo area just outside of East Park Apartment. That's located at twenty-twenty seventy Algonquin Road. Please pre-register by texting the word FOOD or COMANDA at two-two-four-four-two-seven-three-four-four-four. We do want to mention again, reiterating, because this is a special planning and zoning commission meeting that will be held on Wednesday, November eighteenth. It's starting at seven-thirty P M. There's only one item on this special meeting, and that a hearing is scheduled that pertains to a special use to allow a video gaming cafe with variations for screening of refuse containers at twenty-one sixty-four Plum Grove Road in our C two General Commercial Services District. Charity owns of Laredo Hospitality is the petitioner. We do want to mention that the week of November twenty-third is the final week for yard waste collection. Yard waste collection actually ends on Saturday, November twenty-eighth. And obviously with this storm, there's a lot of leaves down there, so we do want to mention, please do not push any leaves down into the sewers or into the curbs or into the street. We do have the street sweepers continuing, working throughout the community. We do want to mention that the Rolling Meadows has again partnered with the United States Marine Corps Reserves to collect toys for children in need through the Marines Toys for Tots program. Residents may deliver new unwrapped toys to drop boxes at City Hall. That's here at thirty-six-hundred Kirchhoff Road or at the Rolling Meadows Library at thirty-one-ten Martin Lane. Donations will be accepted through November, obviously through November, all the way through December fourth. We do want to tell people, when you go to the library, please look for one of our recycling totters. It does have a sign that says Toys for Tots on it. We're using the totters this year, obviously for our collection instead of the usual cardboard boxes. Part of it is just so it has a secure area that allows the totters to be wheeled in and out, so it's not in a building per se. But here at City Hall, it actually has an encapsulated area as we continue collecting for Toys for Tots. We do want to mention that on Saturday, December fifth, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting a food drive outside of the Jewel Osco Food located at three thousand Kirchhoff Road from ten A M. to two P M. It's greatly appreciated, and just like what has been done last year, it'd be shared with the Palatine and the Elk Grove Townships. And again, that is Saturday, December fifth, between ten A M. and two P M. The city and Vitale have scheduled another blood drive for Wednesday, December twenty-third, from one P M. to seven P M. in City Hall Council Chambers. There really is a need for social distancing, and appointments are really needed for this event, and you can contact Vitale at eight-seven-seven-two-five-eight-four-eight-two-five. Wearing of a covered face mask is required. Walk-ins will only be accommodated if no scheduled appointments are presented in the council chambers. And again, that is Wednesday, December twenty-third, between one and seven P M. The city Swank and Elgin Recycling will be conducting the annual holiday light recycling program again. The collection boxes will be located here at City Hall again. They should be delivered hopefully by the end of this week or next week. But items that are accepted include the following items: mini lights or Italian lights, C-seven lights, C-nine lights, rope lights, and L E D. Lights. It's really all colors and lengths that will be accepted. However, you must remove garland, live greens, wreaths, or anything that's not, non-recyclable. And the program, once it's started with the boxes here at City Hall, goes all the way until February twelfth of twenty-twenty-one, which will hopefully be a much better year than twenty-twenty has been so far. We do want to mention that the Illinois Secretary of State has implemented new policies to allow drivers to stay safe and well and avoid long lines and crowds at the DMV. Drivers age seventy-five years and older will automatically have their driver's license extended by one year. New expiration date is their birthday in twenty-twenty-one. All other licenses and Illinois IDs have been extended to February first. Vehicle registrations will expire on November first, and they can be renewed online along with duplicate license and I D. requests, plate replacements, and more. For additional information, please go to W W dot cyberdriveillinois dot com. And again, as I reiterated, please do not push the falling leaves or the leaves that have fallen down into the streets, down the sewers. It is greatly appreciated. We do want to mention, and we will have this as part of the committee, the whole coming up, please visit the new Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website. We hope that people can go to our website, then you click to R M. Business Buzz link, or you can go directly to W W dot R M. Business Buzz dot com directly. And again, the R M. Business Buzz is an economic development incentive funded and managed by the city of Rolling Meadows, and we proudly support all local businesses. And then obviously, as the mayor has mentioned before, with COVID-19, please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows is even more important than ever. During these times, it is significant to remember big boxes, our restaurant, and our small businesses throughout Rolling Meadows. With that, we want everybody to be safe and happy, and please, obviously, we have one more meeting, full council meeting before Thanksgiving, but we hope everybody really, really watches what's happening and be safe with family, and also do the best that you can during this holiday weekend for Thanksgiving. But again, mask up. It's mask gators. Also, watch your social distancing, and as people know, here even at City Hall, we want people to visit us, but at the same point in time, please make your visit as quick as you can. We're here to accommodate, work with you, but at the same point in time, we want everybody to be safe in making it through the rest of twenty-twenty into that much better year of twenty-twenty-one. With that, those are items of interest.
Thanks, Manager Crumstock. Cheers to a better twenty-twenty-one indeed. The next item, September twenty-twenty financials, what we're still in this year and on this subject. I'll turn this over to Finance Director Gallagher. You can take it away when you are ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. In your packet tonight is the fiscal year twenty-twenty financial report for results of operations as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty. This is an un-audited report, and the memo really should be read in conjunction with the items, all of the items in the report and that follow the memo. The financial report is really based on what we know at this point in time for our revenues and expenditures. And it's not intended to be a financial estimate. However, we did include the fund balance summary sheet, which shows where we're estimating all of the funds at this point in time. And that is also in this memo and shown in the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget. I'm going to walk through the memo. There's a lot of detailed information. On page two of the memo, we updated a few items. As we're nearing the end of the year, it's important to kind of see where we're headed. Again, this is not a financial estimate, but it does show us where we're sitting year-to-date. The city has completed its third quarter of the fiscal year as of September thirtieth, and these nine months represent seventy-five percent of the year completed. When we started the year, we start with our original adopted budget for twenty-twenty, and that was adopted with a planned use of reserves showing a deficit for the year at about one-point-three million in a negative position. As we move through the year, we did have some budget amendments, and that's highlighted in this memo. With those budget amendments for revenues and expenditures, we have an amended budget, and there's a column in this, there's a whole chart in this memo that reviews this. But with our amended budget, we amended that, and per the revised budget, we have a surplus because of those amendments. And remember that due to COVID and our mitigation efforts, the city council amended the twenty-twenty budget, and we were able to use reserves because of the fact that the city has had successful, successful performance over the last few years. We're able to reuse reserves for twenty-twenty in addition to that for twenty-twenty-one for proposed budget. As a reminder to that, we've mentioned this before, that that's not a plan for the future going forward, but because of the fact that we had to mitigate some of the revenue losses, we did amend the budget. For the amended budget, again, we're showing a surplus. For year-to-date revenues through September thirtieth, we have revenues exceeding expenditures about nine-hundred thousand. Again, that's seventy-five percent of the year completed. For the twenty-twenty estimate, we added a column so that you could see that for our estimate, we actually show a deficit position of about four-hundred thousand. So the takeaway from that is we are trending better than our original planned budget of our original budget. And in addition to that, we just have to be mindful that we have some, some notes that we added to the memo. So when we look through to the next fiscal year, we have revenues that come in through March twenty-twenty-one that we will record back to twenty-twenty, such as our sales tax, home rule, sales tax, local use tax. So we just have to be mindful that while we are, we are looking a little bit better than we had planned, we have some, obviously, we're, we're working with COVID-19 still and the pandemic, pandemic. Recall that the legal marijuana sales taxes began in July twenty-twenty. The first month receipts for July were twenty-three thousand, so those funds are deposited in October, not shown in this report, but I do want to mention that that's a revenue stream that hopefully will also come through and help mitigate some of these revenue losses as well. In addition to that, our local use tax, which is really internet sales, is exceeding the budget. So obviously, we're, we're seeing some trendline information in that way where with the pandemic, people are shopping from home. What I would also say is that our big boxes, our Dollar Tree as well, and our big box stores, our grocery stores, are doing very well for sales tax. And so I think, you know, obviously, we, we've mentioned this before, and I want to reiterate that we've got a very diverse revenue stream for our general fund. And I, I think even though that we're we're sitting here with some, some COVID-19-related expenditure, you know, decreases, we're also seeing increases in other areas. So it's just important as we're, we're working through this, and a lot of the charts in this memo show that. Moving on through the memo, I just want to again reiterate that as of September thirtieth, revenues came in about twenty-eight million or about four percent above budget, and the city's expenditures came in at twenty-seven million or about three percent above budget. On page three of the memo, we did a detailed look at our budget amendments. I'm not going to walk through them, but they're all detailed in our memo. And remember too, that when we work through presenting to you in June next year, twenty-twenty-one, we will present to you the city's financial results for twenty-twenty. And the detail of this right now will eventually land in our audit, and it's really important to note all of our budget amendments. As we talked about, we've had four budget amendments so far for the year for revenues. Two relate to transfers in for the city from other funds because of the health of those funds. We were able to do that in the performance of those funds. We also received a census grant from Cook County and the CARES Act grant for COVID. We had some expenditure budget amendments. We had the Business Assistance Program, the Temporary Family Assistance Program, and a grant to the Salvation Army. We wanted to make sure that we listed all those, that we're keeping track of those. On page four of the memo, we talk about our COVID reimbursement programs. Really important to note that we're maintaining a very accurate cost accounting of all of the expenditures that are related to COVID-19. I really want to commend all of our departments in taking the time and effort. It's, it's a lot of effort to make sure that we're properly accounting for those expenditures. Our first submittal to FEMA has been completed, and now we're next, we're in the next round of submittals and requests for information back from FEMA and I E M A. So that amount, we don't exactly know. We're hopeful that we'll receive amounts back from FEMA, but it all is based on their guidelines. We were fortunate enough to receive monies from the CARES Act of three-hundred sixteen thousand. Recall that we did submit to about nine-hundred for nine-hundred thousand. We were just notified just last week that we're going to be receiving another twelve thousand dollars from the CARES Act funding from Cook County. That will be attributed to the twenty-twenty year again for COVID-19 direct reimbursement. Moving on to the expenditure charts, again, just showing for the general funds, some charts that help kind of show it at a bird's eye view. Page three, page five relates to the transfers for the budget in our budget estimates. And then page six will show you where some new economic data we put in this memo so that you could see from January through September, the unemployment rate unfortunately quite higher from the beginning of the year, obviously. September was a little bit lower at eleven-point-three percent for the statistical area of our area where we sit. We don't always know exactly for Rolling Meadows, but we sit in a statistical area that we have to report. We receive information on from the Illinois Department of Employment Security. And finally, wrapping up for cash and investments, our summary cash investment statement that we provide you shows you where the largest share of the city's cash is in the general. shows you where the largest share of the city's cash is in the general fund. And overall, for all our funds, we have about $31 million overall across all funds. And finally, I just want to touch on the fund balance estimate on page eight of the memo. Just showing you again where we're estimating, and it's very much in line with what had shown in the 2021 budget. So there really is no change to this from what you had seen in the 2021 proposed budget. For the 2020 fiscal year, we have this outlined in here in this memo that you can, can see that, we'll continue to update that if, if need be. There is a lot of detailed information and charts that follow the, the memo, but I just wanted to touch on the highlights tonight for you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Finance Director Gallagher. Appreciate that. Moving on with the next item, which is the Traffic Review Committee Report for October of 2020. For that shot in the dark here, Director Horn, is this going to be for you or Assistant Director Charlton?
I'll take it, Mayor. Thanks. There's not a lot to report tonight. We had two items that we discussed. You'll notice that we're starting to clean the agenda up and get a lot of projects completed. We did address two issues related to speeding and subdivisions. One is going to be more of a wait and see, and the other one is going to ask the police department to do some speed monitoring in the future when they get some of the equipment they've procured. So that's my report. And if anyone has questions, they're, can feel free to reach out to me later in the week. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Horn. And I guess what we'll do now is circle back to Manager Crumstock, and we'll start on the November 17th, 2020 Committee of the Whole draft agenda, and then move on from there.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we have four things that are being planned. The first one is Joe Turnage, our ComEd representative, will be here to do his annual report for ComEd. So he will take over the screen and walk through some of the other items. Then we have a website update. It's been some time since we've gone through that. As the mayor knows, we've been loading a lot of COVID-19 and some other things. We just want to go over what we have as a feature for our website before it gets updated in 2021. Then we do have a Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website, just doing some more information about that. And then obviously, the 2021 community events, we do publish them. We do talk to, about them. But again, just like in 2020, it's all subject on what happens with COVID-19 and then as each item is actually in here. But we have four items that are prepared for November 17th. And very quickly, just keep on rolling along. We do have the last meeting of the month, which would be November 24th. We do have a full meeting at that point in time. We would have the second readings of both items that we just talked about during first reading today. And then we will get some additional item, information for the one ordinance that was requested. We do have the initial first reading for COVID-19. Again, new ordinance, pay some bills. Then we would be accepting the library budget and the city budget. And then we do have a planned development agreement for the cultivating change and hillside towing properties. And that's part of what you just approved tonight, but this is just one more thing part of it. And then we do have communities of interest, October 2020, new business senior snowplow. And then we're going to try something, and this is for the mayor and I to try to work out, but we're hoping to do an achievement award. Obviously, it's a little hard to do it in a remote access, but we're going to try doing that. And that is not on the draft agenda, but just hold on. And hopefully, we'll have a nice event that we can do at this meeting too. Those are on the November 24th.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock, for sharing that recap. And then that brings us now to matters not on the agenda. Why don't we go ahead and pick up where we left off with Alderman Sanoyka on this? And then if there's any other matters, we'll continue on with them. Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess we can start with just the noise ordinance guidelines that, that we have. So I have in front of me the municipal code. I'm looking at chapter 70 in and under article two. So what this section of our code provides, and this is what I was referencing when I was talking with the resident, is that there appears to be a list of really specific items that are defined by, as noise. But then it also says in the code that this enumeration shall not be deemed to be exclusive. And the reason that I want to dig into the code a little bit at this point is for the council to think about while we're under this state of emergency, while there's a lot of individuals that are at home in their residences and working. You know, there, those areas are zoned as residential areas. They're not zoned as, as commercial areas. But yet, the function appears to be very much a, a office space for, for many individuals. And so what I would want the council to consider is whether or not we need to make any adjustments to this code to make it really clear for the enforcement of any excessive noise in the terms of duration or decibel level and whether or not, or whether or not the code itself is, is sufficient in order to, in order for any resident to basically call the city and say, listen, you know, my neighbors have, have a landscaping service that's here, or I have a neighbor that has been, you know, doing work on their home. It's been going on for hours. I am trying to get calls done. You know, is there, is there a way that we can, we can broker kind of a compromise at this point? Because at, at this point, it sounds like my residents are not comfortable bringing this issue up to the city. So what I would want to request is that staff take a look at this and then provide an update to council on whether or not this is, the current code is sufficient or if a resident were to call regarding this issue, that the code is actually not sufficient, that they would be told that this is, this is beyond the city's capabilities.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. And so with, with that, you, you mentioned duration. So obviously, what triggered this from your resident was that there was seeming to be an overly extended timeframe for, were they mowing the lawn? Is that, was it landscaping? Is that what it was?
It, it sounded like the, the resident was upset about some landscaping work that was being done in the neighborhood. And they had stated that today it had been going on for more than two hours at a really high decibel, for them, really high decibel around their property for longer than two hours and that they work from home. And so this was, so that this was, so it was, I guess, difficult for them to, to conduct their job during the day for, for that work.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then staff, maybe starting with Manager Crumstock, are there any considerations that you'd like to point back out to the council in hearing this from Alderman Sanoyka's request for staff to begin looking into this matter?
I guess that what we're just hearing is that Chief Noackey and obviously, the rest of staff will look at our current ordinance. And then as Alderman Sanoyka said, we'll come back with a staff report or any additional changes that we could see. But that's what I'm really hearing at the first time, that we're just to do some evaluation and analysis and then come back with a staff report.
Okay, very good. And Alderman Sanoyka, do you have any, any desirable timeframe on this? Soonest availability or a specific time, like the next committee of the whole?
I'm hoping that this is something simple that can be cleared up in, in notes if it doesn't require any code changes. But if it turns out that after staff reviews this, that it requires something more in depth, then yes, I would rather have this be on a committee of the whole, which is next week. So I don't know if it's too soon to do that.
Sure. It might have to move to December's. But as far as feedback, you're, you're satisfied if it, if it can be brought back in writing through notes and an update report?
Yes, because I think the resident's mostly concerned of, of being a bother, which is why I'm speaking on their behalf right now and they're not speaking. And they want to just know, is this even worth, worth call, calling the city on?
Yeah. As somebody who works from home regularly and the different landscapers that come around with their different levels of quality machines, some are far noisier than others and more frequent. So I empathize, but I think this will be a slippery slope if we tread down that. But hopefully, staff can provide some feedback soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Director Horn maybe has some input to share on this topic. Director Horn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarification, because I am certain that community development will have to get involved. I don't want to say this. Do we need to distinguish between landscaping work and work related to a active approved building permit?
Is the question directed at me? I'm sorry.
I would believe so.
Okay. Well, so the resident specifically stated landscaping work from a service. So I, I think that landscaping would be in scope as opposed to like roofing or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Director Horn. And then if we're free to move on from that subject, I see Alderman O'Brien. Your hand is up. Floor is yours.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. It's kind of just related to that. I'd be kind of with you, a slippery slope on that one is clearly, I know a lot of us are working from, hopefully, with the weather changing and landscaping wrapping up. Because I, I do understand, we joke on conference calls, I'm sure, I'm, oh, let me close this door. The weather's been nice. Let me close this window so you don't hear the landscapers at my neighbor's house. So hopefully, that'll help too, because I just joked with some neighbors and things like that too. So hopefully, that'll help, because I certainly understand that. But I think that's a slippery slope. I would agree with that. And so hopefully, to Alderman Sanoyka's point, we can get an update through the weekly minute or weekly notes we get. And then with the, the weather changing, hopefully, the, the landscaping's on its last couple of weeks here.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I had a couple of neighbors reach out to me and said, and asked me a question. And I said, why is it that some of the communities around here have, allow leaves to be raked or blown into the curbs? And the community has a truck that comes by and sucks the leaves up, and Rolling Meadows does not. So I guess I'm asking if we can maybe put that up for discussion on a future committee of the whole meeting? Again, it was only two people, but they asked a question that I couldn't answer. So I thought I'd throw it out here.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Staff have any institutional knowledge as to why we don't provide that service? And then also, if it's necessary to bring up at a larger conversation at another time? Director Horn?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't lower my hand from the last one, but I can add something. I, unfortunately, I do have experience with a leaf program. Residents are not supposed to sweep it into the street. I'll just let you know, they do that incorrectly. The, the primary reason communities don't do it is the expense of the equipment and the inability to resell the equipment. So it would be a pretty significant report to do a full investigation of that. But we certainly could add it to the list of other items that we need to bring back to the council and, and have you all discuss it based on some primary points that we can make at a committee of the whole.
Okay, Alderman Diastis, as far as satisfying answers and next steps?
I, I think, I think that would be fine. Like I said, it doesn't seem to be a lot of residents. I said it was only two, and they were both talking to me at the same time. So I, I don't think it's a, a huge thing out there with only two residents. And if we could just get a, a kind of a general report, I don't think you need to get into a huge report. So this way, they can, they'll know, I'll let them know when the next committee of the whole is that you'll be discussing it and they can listen in directly. And the second question I had is, for matters not on the agenda, are we going to be getting some documentation from the Salvation Army regarding the, how the 25,000 is being distributed?
Mayor, I can answer that. So part of the agreement is that they do have to file with the city. And we did just receive the first two weeks of, that there was no status use of that money. But there are some things in the queue that we do know about. But they do have to provide that. It, that is part of the agreement that we have with them, that City Attorney Wolf worked with the Salvation Army. But everything has to be documented for auditors, how that money is actually being used. So the plan is to distribute that to the city council, but try to keep that as confidential as we can. But at the same point in time, making sure that everybody knows how the money was allocated and utilized.
Thank you.
Anything further, Alderman Diastis?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Alderman Besessi?
Yes. Okay, two things. First one, you know, over the time I've been in Alderman, I've been asked, got countless times regarding the leaves in the street. So I do believe there's more than the two that Alderman Diastis is, is mentioning. I'm not saying we should go down doing, you know, a real extensive research on it yet, but I do believe that's a good topic for, for a cow as well. The other thing, this is more of something for Police Chief. I continue to get phone calls from residents near Waverly Park, particularly around drug use in the park. I just want to know if, you know, I know patrols were going to be stepped up and everything. I'm just wondering if there's anything else we can do.
Chief Noackey, you want me to respond to that? My, my recommendation regarding that issue is, obviously, we have done increased patrols, but the officers do have other commitments in that. My, the, the best suggestion is if they see any suspicious activity going on, just to dial 911. They can remain anonymous if they don't want anybody to know that they're calling and we'll have an officer go out there. That's usually the, the fastest and best way to address those problems. As soon as they see the activity is to dial 911.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Besessi?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other matters not on the agenda this evening? If not, doesn't it look like I see any other hands? Just to let everyone know who's not aware, but you should by looking at the agenda. There is a request to go into closed session. It's for union negotiations under the 5 ILCS 120/2C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It will require a motion and a roll call vote. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, and thank you for the second, Alderman Besessi. Is there any discussion to go into closed session here? Let's see, Alderman O'Brien, your hand may be up. Is it for discussion?
Well, just legendary.
Okay, legacy hands. Thank you. I've been seeing, seeing none. We'll have the Kirk, Kirk call roll.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Tannen?
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, we will now enter into closed session. Be advised, the audience and press both know that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. And for everybody leaving, be sure tomorrow to thank a veteran for their service on Veterans Day. Council, I'll see you on the other conference bridge for closed session. Have a good night.